We're not having, Cassie's not here, so we're gonna be ready to start in a minute here.
Okay.
Once Jenny gets back to the helm. Ready, okay. Stand for Pledge of Allegiance, please. Alright, thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Nordby.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Here.
Councilmember McKenzie.
Here.
Councilmember Schwer is absent. Mayor Muggi.
Here. Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
So moved.
So moved. Councilmember Woods. Second, Councilmember McKenzie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Presentations.
Alright, we have two presentations this evening. The first one up is Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special date in Step Side for planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called it Arbor Day was first observed in the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can be a solution to provide climate change and reducing erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, monitoring the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. Whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And now therefore, Mayor John Muggi for the City of North St. Paul, Minnesota does hereby proclaim Friday, April 25th, 2025 as Arbor Day in North St. Paul. And I urge all of the citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support the efforts to protect our trees and woodlands.
Thank you.
The next presentation is National Animal Therapy Day. Whereas there are thousands of pet partners, therapy animal teams serving the communities across the United States. Whereas scientific research shows that interacting with therapy animals can reduce stress, relieve depression, slow heart rate, lower blood pressure, and strengthen the immune system. And whereas therapy animal teams in the City of North St. Paul play an essential role in improving human health and well-being through the human animal bond. And whereas these exceptional therapy animals who partner with their human companions bring comfort and healing in those in need. And whereas therapy animal encourages the people of the City of North St. Paul to celebrate their therapy animals and their human handlers. So now therefore, on behalf of the City Council and the City of North St. Paul, Mayor John Muggi for the City of North St. Paul does hereby proclaim Tuesday, April 30th, 2025 as National Therapy.
Thank you.
Next up is our consent agenda. So, Item A, April 1st, 2025 Workshop and Regular Meeting Minutes. Item B, General Claims of $1,188,893.63. Item C, HRA Claims of $37,464.65. Item D, Proposed Ordinance Amending Chapter 117 of the North St. Paul City Code Consumption and Display Permits. Item E, Parks and Open Space Master Plan Final Approval. Item F, Asme Nonessential Union Supplemental Agreement. Item G, Charitable Yambling Permit, Metro, North Metro Flex Academy Annual Carnival, May 9th of 2025. Item H, Building Permit Report for March of 2025. And Item I, Regularly Some Second Donations for March of 2025.
Thank you. Anybody like to call anything?
No.
If not, can I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved, Your Honor.
So moved. Councilmember Norby?
Second.
Second. Councilmember Woods. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Open to the public. Jeff? Schmidt, isn't it?
Yes.
Alright. How are ya?
I'm good yourself.
Good.
I'm here tonight, Jeff Schmidt, 2516, 16 down to the east, North St. Paul. Nearly, and I'm here on behalf of St. Peter's Catholic Church, nearly lifelong member there and nearly lifelong resident. And I'm just here to ask for your consideration as you consider the special event umbrella license fee changes that if there can be any consideration to nonprofits or churches or that sort of thing, so it doesn't negatively impact their ability to host events with food trucks or craft shows or whatever the case may be. So, and that's why I'm here. So, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, kid.
I was wondering what you were gonna call me.
Yeah. Carrie, welcome.
Good evening, Carrie from Bach. I'm here on behalf of the Church St. Peter at 2,600 Margaret Street. It feels really weird to sit on that side of the field. Like Jeff said, we're really concerned about the proposed changes in special event permit. For us, the ability to, if we lose that umbrella license, which we've operated on the last several years, it's really gonna inhibit our ability to attract food trucks to the City of North St. Paul. Now, people can say, just take from the car show. Well, after 13 weeks of eating car show food, they're all delicious, but we kinda like a little variety. And we'd like to bring in some different trucks. Where the issue comes in is the fee, the fee for the city, because we charge our trucks a participation fee. That's how we, that's a big part of our fundraiser. So we charge them $100 a day to be there. And my ability to pay for an umbrella fee that covers all their licenses makes us an attractive city to come to and an attractive event. We're a growing event. We've been growing for, we've been doing businesses way for the last five or six years. We'd very much like to continue it that way. I'm concerned that if they have to pay for the license, that we're not an attractive venue anymore. And that's what we're here to please ask you to humbly reconsider doing that. I just wanna clarify that when we have an umbrella license, which we've been able to get from the city, our trucks are still going through all the due diligence with the city. They're still submitting their insurance, they're still submitting their Ramsey County food license, and they're still either submitting their fire inspection or they'd have to get one. The thing with our event is we're mid-September. By the time trucks get here, they've been inspected thousands of times. I have trucks who are coming from the state fair. I mean, they're, they're good, they've been inspected. And for them to have to pay that additional fee and help us with their contributions to participate really will inhibit our ability to attract trucks. So again, I humbly, humbly, as a nonprofit in your city, who is only a year younger than you, we are, we were dedicated in 1889. So we've been neighbors a long time. Please, as an area nonprofit, I please ask you to consider letting us keep business the way it is with the umbrella permit. There's no threat to health and safety. And I see Jenny's clock is gonna run out on me, so thank you for any consideration you can give us. And I hope you'll see, I hope you come to our festival September 20th and 21st.
Nice. Thank you.
Carrie, thank you.
Alright, appreciate that.
Alright, jumping into City Business Acts. Item A, it's approved ordinance amending Chapter 122 of the North St. Paul City Code, which is a special event permit. I'm gonna turn that over to Attorney Jackford Banks. He's gonna speak to it.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. So before you, you have something of a cleanup ordinance on the special event permits and food truck, or food vendor permits that have been handled here. So what this specific ordinance is doing is actually removing a vendor license requirement that is currently inactive under the code. So how it used to work is the event had to get a, you know, a blanket event permit. And then each vendor had to get a vendor license, which was a fairly pro forma thing. Now, we have put in place a slightly more robust food vendor permit. And that was, we've had this discussion that was with the fire department. There were some, you know, safety concerns that way. And the City Council has already approved those permits, requiring those permits. So that is an annual permit for food vendors with the City of North St. Paul. For food trucks, and then it would be a day of inspection if it's a more of a from scratch, like a tent. And those have already been approved. So what this is doing is now taking out the former requirement that there be an umbrella event permit and a vendor level permit. So now what will need to happen is there will be an event umbrella, you know, umbrella level event permit for the whole event. That'll be a special event permit. And then each food vendor there will need to have a food vendor permit from the City of North St. Paul. There is a fee for that because there is a fire inspection for that. But that is an annual license, or annual permit. And so that would be a one-off, and then it's good for the whole year for any operations within the City of North St. Paul. So again, that, that action has been taken already. And this is just to remove the vendor permits and then as well to correct, there were a number of typos and misspellings. So as long as we're changing it, I figured I'd, we'd go through and fix those. That's all I have on this particular one. I would be happy to stand for any questions.
When we, oh, thank you. When we approved the food truck thing, and maybe my memory's faulty, it was, did we say that the North St. Paul license was reciprocal? Or?
They had it for the state.
If they had it for somewhere else, it also covered it for the city?
They could have an, excuse me, an ag license, which covered them for the entire state, or they could have a county permit that would cover them for that county, is my understanding. Is that, does that?
So if the food truck has a state or Ramsey County, then they do not need the North St. Paul one in addition to, right?
Well, no. And they wanted that to, to be in place for, even if it was that they had had one in Ramsey County, just the follow-up of getting that information from that city or that, from that event, that to follow up that information, get that from them, follow up any questions that they may have had, and make sure everything looks good. So they were still looking to implement that fee.
So then they're saying that if they're bringing in a food truck that has not been inspected by our city, fire, that they would be, have to pay that inspection fee prior to them serving food up at the church?
Yes, that is correct. So there are, there are sort of two sets of licenses that a food truck needs. So they have a county or Department of Agriculture food safety license. And that is not something that we're getting involved in. We're leaving that for the county. They would also then need a city fire inspection. And that was the, specifically that was the fire department's concern, was sort of, you know, doing an inspection of gas lines and burners and those sorts of things based on a couple of recent accidents. So that, we do not currently have anything in the code that would make that reciprocal with other inspections. Because I, I don't know that there is a general requirement for fire inspections like that in state law or at the county level. Could, we could potentially look into, I know there are some other city-level licenses that do have a more robust fire inspection. We could look into adding something to say that, you know, if there is a fire safety inspection component to another license they hold, then we could make it reciprocal. But it would still be, there would still be some amount of administrative work to make sure that they do have that fire safety component in addition to the food safety component.
Okay, then, you, there's, I've seen many food trucks around. Some of them have multiple four, five, 10 units running through the city, okay? They bring only one truck here to be inspected. That's the only truck that will be able to sell food at this location in our city because of the fact that, let's say that truck was number four, number nine, 10, and 11. They have not been inspected by our city, even though they're thinking that they had one inspected is gonna be, be able to come here. They're gonna actually have to technically get all of them inspected. Is that something that we can thin down to? They can bring in a different vehicle if that one's down that night?
So the, the way that the ordinance that has been passed already for the food truck vendor ordinance, the way that that is defined is it defines it on a per-truck basis. So each truck requires, that permit requires an inspection. I bet we could work something out where, you know, 'cause we have the, the fee, the fee is mostly for the fire inspection. And I bet it would be a lot more effective to inspect 10 trucks at once than to inspect one truck.
That way you can say have a truck.
Town 10 different days.
Right.
It would require some further tweaking to the code language, but I bet we could, we could talk with the fire department. I bet we could work out some kind of a formula for, you know, the fee, the fee gets you, you know, an inspector, and then if you bring a bunch of units to be inspected, that would potentially work. Again, that would require an amendment to how the code is currently written. And I do not believe that would address the specific concern that has been raised here of, they would still, you know, they would still need a city permit to operate within the city, even if they've been operating at, for example, the state fair.
Okay, so if she were to bring in a vehicle that was at the fair, and if they had two vehicles, the one vehicle that she had scheduled to come here was broke down, that second vehicle would be best to have been inspected here.
The, the.
You know what I mean, the same scenario, because if they're at the fair for 10 or 11 days, there's, could something go wrong?
Yes. So the way the code is written would require an inspection of the truck that is operating in the City of North St. Paul. However, the vendor wants to go about ensuring that the truck that is here is the truck that has been inspected.
And to be clear, this is per, inspecting the capability of that truck to operate safely and not, or that vendor, the vehicle booth, whatever it may be, to operate safely within the city limits and ensure that they're not going to, you know, blow up or something like catch fire, harm our citizens. And this applies not just to events like the one at St. Peter, but to the car show and everything like that. So, so.
Yes. It would apply to the car show. It would apply to a food truck that wants to park on a corner or in a parking lot for a couple of random days.
Yes.
Any food vendors. And again, it is an annual fee. So if there's a food truck that is here for two days in the spring and then gone all summer and then wants to come back for St. Peters, if they've already done that inspection once that year, their initial payment of that fee would still be good. So they would not have to get a new permit for coming back.
It's good from the day that they inspected until one day of the next following year. A certain day, whatever. How do they consider that? Is that per month? Month to month? I mean, month to the year of the next year? How do they want to do that?
So all licenses issued expire on, so I guess I perhaps misspoke slightly. So it's April 30th of each year is the turnover date. And that's just an administrative, easy to keep track of that day. So if they got an inspection on May 1st, then they are, they are good. They do not have to pay another fee. They do not have to get another inspection until the following May 1st.
And there's no changes with the cost of the special event permit?
Yeah, what was that cost to get to that?
Well, that permit fee is waived because.
What's that?
Right, but it's.
You're good this year.
You're not a profit, correct?
Yeah, right.
And the fee for the trucks is $80 per?
Eighty-five dollars?
I believe it's $85 per year, per food truck.
Yeah. Which for most food trucks is easily recoverable within.
Sorry, yeah. It's an $80 fee, as long as they are applying at least seven days before they need the license to issue. And then it's slightly more expensive if they need either a rush inspection, or if we catch them without the license and they need to get an after-the-fact license.
They would be probably escorted out of the city at that point without a permit.
They would be, not necessarily escorted out, they would be shut, they would not be able to operate. They would be shut down for that day. And then they would have to get the permit, which would require, I'd say, $160 after-the-fact permit fee.
So just to make sure I'm understanding things correctly, the, because of this change, the, the special event permit fee is going away for nonprofits?
You guys already determined that.
Okay, so, 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 so that's already done. And then the additional thing would be the $80 for the food truck?
Which has already, also already been decided.
Right.
Any more discussion?
Nope.
So, the approval is that you go with, where it's written here, it's the ordinance?
And a cleanup, yeah.
And a cleanup that, and then, and it goes, and it covers the, what we discuss here with the $80 and the once-a-year.
So the, the $80 in the once-a-year inspection was a previous ordinance that has already been passed.
That's already done.
The ordinance that is in front of you tonight is removing that individual, that each, right now, there's still a requirement that, so you'd need an umbrella event permit, a vendor license, and a food vendor license. This would be to remove the vendor license requirement and clean up a couple of typos. So that is the ordinance that is in front of you tonight.
So just to make sure I'm understanding this, and I appreciate you bearing with me, approving the ordinance in front of us today truthfully has no bearing on them, or any nonprofit within the city. And it would be up to us if we want to revisit if the food truck ordinance is overly harmful upon events. But, but the ordinance before us today really has no effect on them.
I'm not sure it has no effect. So it does, if they are holding, hosting a special event at which there are vendors, those vendors are required to get an individual vendor license for the event. So this would have the effect of reducing the burden on an event at St. Peters by removing the, reducing the number of approvals required. And then, yes, if you wanted to revisit the food truck inspection and the food, food vendor fee, that would then have to be a subsequent action.
So then, if she brings a vehicle in that has not been inspected, they decide to set up here, they have to pay the cost to have it inspected while it's sitting here before they open up the shop. So that would be the same effect as whether they came down to the fire hall and, and got it inspected?
Uh, yes, depending, it, it changes how much the inspection costs, depending on.
If they brought it seven days prior to the event, it would be 80. If they brought it the day of, it's.
It would be 125. And then if they just try and get away with it and get caught, then it's 160.
Yep. Can I ask a favor, Mayor? With your permission, I, I see members of the audience shaking their head about what Jack does. Would you be okay if I invite one of the members of the audience up front to see where the disconnect is?
Yeah.
Carrie, would you approach again? Thank you. I just wanna make sure I'm understanding this so I can vote accordingly.
In my communications with city staff, the issue is the fire. And I agree, I don't want a truck to blow up at my event either. We, my insurance requirements through the archdiocese are probably more stringent than the City of North St. Paul's. I was told by staff that as long as they have a fire inspection from a reciprocal city in the metro, which all of my trucks do by the time they get to September, that they could submit that, and that would take care of the fire requirement. That's why we're requesting, you know, some help with not having these trucks have to pay again, because like I said, we're the middle of September, we're the end of the season. These trucks have been licensed and inspected all over town. And we're still sharing all of that information with the city. Every single one of our trucks submits our certificate insurance listing Church of St. Peter, listing City of North St. Paul. They submit their Ramsey County food license. They submit a fire inspection. If for some, I do have a vendor who comes from Stearns County. He probably is gonna have to pay for the fire inspection, 'cause he's probably not gonna have one that our city will, will accept. But I, I want you to understand, we care about the fire inspection as well. We're asking for some financial, assistance so that we can continue to use food trucks as a fundraiser. The other problem we have is North St. Paul's small. I don't have a lot of trucks to pick from. If we were Maplewood or Oakdale, they do huge food truck events. I could just go down the catalog and, and pick out the trucks I want. You know, we don't have a lot of food truck events in town other than the car show. The car show, us, and I believe the city brings in some trucks for the Autumn Arts Festival. But even with the Autumn Arts Festival, see, you wish I didn't work here in New Orleans. At the Autumn Arts Festival, the city has them pay for the license, but the city doesn't ask for anything in return. Not a cut of profits, not a participation fee. So for those vendors, it makes perfect sense. Where the, where the challenge is, is with us, because we do use it as a fundraiser.
So again, Carrie, I, I don't disagree with the thing you said there. But my understanding is the fire license part of it, we voted on two months ago. Now, that might have already been overly burdensome.
Watched that meeting.
Right. But now, we might have been overly burdensome to you. But the part we're voting on today, what, what impact does the part we're voting on today have to them? Because the fire truck part has already been passed.
And we have full agreement and participation in that.
Right.
I have kids all over that parking lot. I want nobody to get hurt. The problem is, is if we lose the ability to pay the umbrella fee, which covers all of my vendors, so that they don't have to pay. That's, that's the challenge we're at. Because again, we use it as a fundraiser. We're, we're a nonprofit. You know, that's how we pay for our ministries. That's how we serve our neighbors.
Sure, but this doesn't change that. You already passed the $80 fee.
We're asking to, right now, for my event this year, the City of North St. Paul will bill me $95. That covers all of my vendors. That goes away next year, all of my vendors have to pay for their own license individually. And then I won't be able to use that as a fundraiser. Because again, can they make it? Yeah, but we're, we're a short-term event. We're a few hours on Saturday night and a few hours on Sunday. And we've been known to have rainstorms go through, you know? And so we're just, we're just humbly, humbly asking for some kind of concession workaround for the nonprofits who are trying to use food truck events as fundraisers.
And I understand what you're saying. I'm just trying to make sure I understand things right. But to me, if, if we wanted to give St. Pete's what they're asking for, we would need to visit, revisit the fire food truck license that we already voted in. Us voting yes today really doesn't.
Our trucks are going through the exact same process of a license, or does it?
Right, but to, to give you what you want, in my understanding, we would have to revisit what we already approved two months ago. Voting yes on this does, doesn't have much bearing on what they're asking for.
Other than reducing the cost that the vendors would have to pay, because they don't have to pay the vendor license.
My understanding is, is if we can still pay the umbrella fee, which is how we've operated, that is the best solution for us.
Besides, that's outside of the realm of what we're voting on tonight.
But it does impact my trucks.
Right.
So what Jason is saying is we would have to revisit what we've already passed two months ago in order to address your issue. We cannot address that tonight.
Well, I guess the part of the ordinance I'm referring to is remove. Well, the, I guess the part of the ordinance I'm referring to is removal of the umbrella permit, because that has worked very well for us.
That's not in the.
It's in this ordinance that's being removed.
Right, but we would have to amend it, and then send, yeah, so, okay.
How does this do for other ones, as far as other events? And does this, other places that?
There's not a lot of other people that do what we do.
Norby, but during Halloween, Friday night, and then Casey Lake, the Arts Festival. That's really, and St. Mark's hasn't gotten into this yet, but, you know, who's to say they couldn't?
So I think I maybe see where the disconnect is coming from. So, in the, the part of the ordinance that is being deleted, it does say umbrella fee, "Any special event conducted by a public charity is subject to one special event vendor fee for all vendors."
That's it, amen.
So it is removing the umbrella, but it is also removing the requirement that there be any vendor fees. So, it is, you no longer have to pay one vendor fee, you now have to pay zero vendor fees. But they have to pay the food truck vendor fee. And so that is how it is.
That's where the, that's where the, the challenge is for us.
And so, the ordinance tonight does not have anything to do with the food truck vendor fee. It is just removing the individual vendor fee.
I want my umbrella fee. I can't wait to pay my umbrella fee.
Well, which, which is how it's gonna be this year. What's gonna affect you is the next year.
Correct.
So if you wanted to re-bring this back, we would have time to do that. Again, not affecting what you're voting on tonight.
She's good for this year.
Do we still vote on tonight, because this was moved down?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, my, my, a- at this point in time, my recommendation would be that, A, we do vote on this tonight, but we also ask Brian to contact local charities and get the cost burden that this will change in, in '26 to a workshop, to see if we would want to revisit the food truck ordinance. But, from everything I'm hearing, I, because it'll actually reduce their fee to me voting yes today on this ordinance, makes sense. But revisiting to see if we were overburdened some upon local charities wouldn't, might make sense for a workshop topic.
I can tell you, I've done a ton of research on this. I do a lot of work with the Minnesota Food Truck Association, and it's really all over the map. Some cities totally exempt their nonprofits, some don't. I, I was trying to find a trend or numbers, but it truly is all over the map. I know Arden Hills, they just, they got rid of their food truck ordinance, they just let, make people be licensed through the county. But it, it, it is, every city really is kinda doing their own thing.
So vote on this tonight, and then have a discussion.
If you'd like to bring it back, yes, please.
All right, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Looking for a motion.
Motion, please. Approve the ordinance of chapter twenty-two, North St. Paul's special permit.
So moved.
So moved, Councilmember Woods.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Norby, all those in favor say aye.
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 Against?
Nay.
Nay.
All right, next up is the award and sale of the six-point-seven-four-million-dollar general obligation street reconstruction and utility bonds, series twenty-two-five-A. You have a capable ear to speak to this.
Yeah, welcome.
I don't think that's working up here. This was not working? No.
You can sit.
Do you, do you wanna sit over? Oh, sure, sure, sorry.
I'm gonna finish that, don't they? Your hand almost got flat.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Michaela Hewitt with Baker Tilly, and here to present the results of the city's issuance for the general obligation street reconstruction and utility bonds, series twenty-two-five-A. I was here about a month ago, in which the council authorized the sale of the bonds. And I know you heard during the work session tonight, kind of a preview of the results of the sale, and kind of the volatility of the market, but I'm here again to present the results, share some information, and happy to address any questions that you might have, with the recommendation to award, or award the sale of those bonds. So again, the purpose for the bonds, the proceeds are used to finance various street reconstruction projects that were identified in the city's five-year street reconstruction plan, for which the city did hold a public hearing and approved that plan. Various utility projects within the city, as well as related costs of issuance for the project. The term of the bonds is twenty years, and the, one of the interesting pieces in the market was when we presented the pre-sale summary, we were showing a true interest cost of four-point-one-eight percent. There was a lot of volatility in the market last week, which, based on all the interest rate increases, we were showing a hundred basis point increase, closer to five-point-one-nine percent. So there was a lot of uncertainty in the market. There, we were seeing higher rates, less bidders, and just general volatility. After watching the markets yesterday, we were happy to see that the actual results of the sale were four-point-oh-two percent. And, as we'll see here, I'll go into the, the actual bids that the city did receive on the issue. But this is the bond buyer index, which does provide a preview of the interest rates, and you'll see over the last couple of weeks, or, excuse me, within the last couple of weeks, the, the increase in the rates, and again, that volatility in the market. So the city's bond issue, we did receive six bidders. You'll see the range of the interest rates, with the winning bid of the four-point-oh-two-one-seven percent, and the highest bid going all the way up to four-point-three-two-six-three percent. In less volatile market, we'll probably see a little bit less of a spread between the, the, the tics that were presented with the bid, so again, you can see a little bit of the volatility in the market. And this is just showing with the bid what the, the pricing related to that bid was for the bonds. Again, here's the, that's the long, or, excuse me, the semi-annual debt service schedule based on the, the pricing. And the other aspect of it was, the city did go through their annual rating review process. We met with S&amp;P and reviewed their topics of discussion and questions, and pleased to present that the results of the rating review this week was an upgrade from a double-A to a double-A-plus. So that's great, great news for the city, and reflects the accomplishments that the city's made related to the financial stability. Some of the highlights related to that upgrade include increases in the reserves, so you have a stronger, sustainable balance for the city. Also, the recent adoption of a formal fund balance policy, which again, reflects having a set fund balance within the city. A long-term operating forecast, which results in the longer-term budget and planning, as well as the commitment by the city to maintain a structural balance and, and overall strong financial performance. So again, the rating, why do we have it? Well, it's a measure of the city's financial strength and ability to repay the debt. And really, at the end of the day, the stronger the rating, the lower the interest cost. And the estimated interest savings going from a double-A to a double-A-plus is about, give or take, the market eight basis points. So we'll expect to see interest rate savings as a result of the, the rating increase as well. Here's, showing there's three rating agencies, Moody's, Fitch, and S&amp;P. And you'll see the double-A-plus is on the very high-grade credit, and it's one below the triple-A. Within the credit rating report, some of the highlights, the credit strengths, again, stable tax base, strong operating performance, and really, available reserves and strong management practices that lead to a strong financial performance. Some credit challenges, and these are, are some you can control, some you cannot, right? A fully-built-out community, and they also look at the incomes, the average incomes within the, within your city. We always look at factors that could lead to an upgrade. If you have improved income levels, which again, you know, based on the, the per resident income, median income, as well as, there was some consideration, and I know Dan has talked, has been conversations about the balance of debt and the structure of debt versus cash payments. But again, another consideration is what the long-term debt burden for the city is, and what that, whether it's the, the term of the debt and the overall level. Factors that could lead to a downgrade, and the way the city's performing, this seems not the trend, and it seems unlikely. But if there were continual deficits or unbalanced budgets, or draws to that fund balance, which again, your fund balance policy maintains what your minimum policy, or, excuse me, your minimum fund balance will be. So the recommendation for tonight is to approve a resolution that awards six-point-five-three million to Northland Securities, based on their low bid of the four-point-oh-two-one percent. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on either the, the sale, or the rating, or any general questions.
Questions, thank you for your presentation, it was very thorough. I appreciate it. If not, can I have a motion if there's no questions? On my call. Okay, Councilmember Kinsey?
I'll second.
Second, Councilmember Woods, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, appreciate you coming. You wanna use the computer, you wanna sit by her?
I don't have a presentation, so I'm.
What do you care anything for then? She is.
Well, you know, if you stand, if you stand up there, you have to do a little song and dance.
That's right. Puppet show.
All right, I'll announce it first. Item C for city business action items is the twenty-twenty-five street utility improvement project, city project number twenty-five dash zero-one. Received bids, award contract, and authorized professional construction services. And Mayor Dolly here to speak to that. Hello, Marty?
Thank you, Brian, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So this next item before you is contemplating award of a construction contract related to the last item that you just heard, in terms of the bonding for the two-thousand-twenty-five street and utility improvement project. That project is, includes improvements to streets and utilities, and some other items, which I'll go through just in a sec, on a few streets. Gerald Avenue between Mohawk and Masabi, Shawnee Drive between McKnight and the Casey Lake Park parking lot, Buell Avenue between Masabi Avenue West and Masabi Avenue East, little bit of a loop there. And also some improvements within Casey Lake Park, including the east parking lot off of Shawnee, McKnight. Some trail improvements on the north side of the park there, and improvements to the Stormwater Basin to accommodate Ramsey-Washington Metro watershed requirements for these types of road improvements. And we're also taking care of the stormwater improvements for the future two-thousand-twenty-seven project. So we're just working in the area once, getting it out of the way. So when we get to two-thousand-twenty-seven, we won't need to do anything. We're, we're banking wetland, or not wetland, watershed credits, if, I guess I could put it that way. So, that's the project. Again, full road reconstruction, new curb and gutter, new driveway aprons for everybody, new water main and water services to the property line with shut-off valves for everyone. And line sanitary sewer services to protect against the instance that, you know, an old clay tile sewer service might collapse. And then we've got an issue with a multimillion-dollar road on top of that. So we're trying to do everything we can to kind of protect that investment, and then walk away and reset that infrastructure lifecycle clock for this whole area, trying to address as many things as we can. So, the project was in the capital improvement plan. And moving forward then, we opened bids on April seventh. The bids did come in favorably, so they ranged from a high at five-million-seven-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand down to the low of five-million-one-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand. So that's a pretty good spread. The engineer's estimate was right around five-point-five million dollars, so right in the middle. That's where we want our estimates to be, we want some bids higher and some bids lower. And I guess the most interesting thing to me was that the low two bids were only separated by twenty-three thousand dollars on a bid that was over five million dollars. So that generally indicates that we're probably getting the best market price for the improvements that we possibly could, given the timing and whatever else, the price of tea in China. I mean, there's a lot of factors that go into these projects, but I was very satisfied with the outcome here. As you heard, with the bond sale information and deposit into the construction account, we pulled this all apart with the low bids and made sure that everything, including a five percent contingency, just in case there's some construction cost overruns. Plus, with the engineering indirect costs, there is adequate funding with these bids to account for everything, including some, like I said, some contingency extra, just in case. So, we're comfortable that funding is in a good place to pay for these things, given the bond sale results. And, I guess, the other thing, before I go into reminding you of what the action item is here, I just want to remind the council and the public that we do have an open house tomorrow at the Casey Lake Building at, from six to seven. It's just an open house, so there isn't like a presentation you have to be there at a specific time for, but certainly welcome, any, welcome any of the council members or anyone from the public to come and learn more, from city staff, from project staff, folks that work with me. We'll have, the electric director will be there, because there is some electric work that's going on, kind of around the same time. And we've sent out some letters to invite people and let them know that we do have some things happening in the neighborhood before the city project starts, which is mostly gas company and some CenturyLink telecommunications work that'll be happening. And we want those guys to hopefully get done and get out of the way before the city work starts. So, if a contract is awarded here tonight, we anticipate a start of, actually, city construction, not necessarily the gas company, but the city work might start late May, maybe early to mid-June, I think is fair. So not right away, by any means. But, still, should be plenty of time to wrap up most things. We think that we will have substantial completion, which doesn't include every aspect of the project, but there'll be a drivable road, we should have all of the utility work done by October. There might be a little bit of cleanup before Thanksgiving, before the construction season formally ends. And then we always see a little bit of activity the following year in two-thousand-twenty-six for maybe growing some grass that didn't come in, some minor landscaping, planting of trees, and that last layer of asphalt that goes in after one freeze-thaw cycle. So, that's the general timeframe, and frame and what we're expecting. But like I said, certainly, come to the open house tomorrow night, six to seven, at the Casey Lake Building, learn more. And with that, the action items before you tonight are twofold, there's two different ones. First one is to award by resolution, a construction contract to the low bidder, R.L. Larson Excavating, in the amount of five-million-one-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. And the second item, which I can't recommend this, Ron left me hanging here, he was gonna come up here with me, his name is also on the staff report. But there is a professional services agreement for that construction phase for WSB. Now that includes construct, full-time construction observer, so we're having Mark Lynch come back, who's worked on the last several projects for us, and is, he's actually a North St. Paul, born and raised. I think he lives right next door in Maplewood right now, but very familiar with the community, our construction standards, public works, electric department, and so we're happy to have him back on the project. Plus, just contract administration and surveying, staking, that sort of thing, so pretty typical. And so that's also as a sep- separate item, to approve that construction services proposal with WSB in the amount of six-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars.
I don't make that recommendation.
Oh, thank you, thank you, since I cannot, thank you, Brian. So with that, I'll stand for any questions the council might have.
Are you satisfied with the contractor, I think he's out of Saint Cloud.
Uh, yes, so R.L. Larson is a contractor that we, I don't think we've ever had them in town before.
I don't think they've been around that long.
Yeah, and, and, so, and I have not worked with them before. I don't have any reason to like disqualify them, or, you know, so we're looking forward to working with them. And like I said, we've got controls, quality assurance built into the contract, or with some of the folks that work for me, to make sure and keep eyes on them, to make sure they're doing a good job. Certainly encourage the, the council and the public to utilize our communication tools with the hotline. And if they do, or if they're concerned about something, whether it's related to the contractor or not, let staff know, and we will address that sort of thing. or not, let staff know and we will address that sort of thing. Sometimes, for example, they start their diesels too early in the morning, which is a disruption to the neighborhood. And there are specific hours, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., that they need to be within. So sometimes we get some complaints like that. And it's nothing against R.L. Larson. I guess we just don't have any evidence to say that they won't do a good job, but we're looking forward to working with them as a new contractor in town and hold them to our standards, really is what it comes down to.
Because I've read the other listings and I, I've been to jobs that all these other ones have been, but I've never been to R.L. Johnson because, or Larson because he's up in St. Cloud. Seems like, oh, I read something that he's like four to six years old of a contractor company.
I've heard they're doing a project for the city of Lino Lakes right now, which includes some deep sewers, so certainly more complicated utility work than what's included in our project.
Well, at least they're local, they're doing...
They're doing work local. Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yep. Yeah, and so, you know, Northdale is from up in that area. They have worked in town before. Ryan Contracting is from Shakopee Savage. Yeah, so I think, I mean, the days when we had Schiffsky in town, those were nice because next door.
Well, you knew what you were getting there.
Yeah, but, you know...
They were trustworthy in operation.
Yeah, the fact that they're coming from St. Cloud, I guess, doesn't concern me at all. In 2014, we had a contractor that was based out of Mora and they did an amazing job, Redstone Contracting. So, you know, I think it just depends on how they operate away from their headquarters, right? And, you know, they may have shop and properties or I don't know how they do it, but, you know, I, I don't think there's anything to disqualify these folks from.
And they've got all the concrete all submitted through the bids through the WU then? Did they...
So we, yeah, so I don't know about supplier, but we hold them to MINDOT specifications for all concrete walk and curb. And that's a part of our city specifications. And we do have quality control testing for concrete cylinders. And they're required to submit their mix design before they get started. And so the engineers will review and approve that prior to start of work. So we've got kind of those controls in there. I don't know if it's coming from Knife River or another ready-mix plant, but we will know that before we start. And generally, the plants that we see are MINDOT certified plants, so.
Morgan, one question if you don't mind, and this is irregardless of who you're picking. Just because there's so much uncertainty, could you speak to what protections there are for the city? Let's say, gas and asphalt go five times their price if this contractor happens to default or go under. Is, is the city protected? And do you believe there's adequate verbiage in the contract for that?
I do. Councilmember Norby, Mr. Mayor, and council. So a couple of contractual facts, I guess, that help protect the city. They are required to submit a performance bond, right? So their surety is guaranteeing performance under the contract to the full amount of the contract, you know, if they were to go out of business or something like that. We also have, I believe, 95% on this, we've got a non-fuel escalator clause in the contract. Some MINDOT jobs, sometimes they'll allow, like if fuel prices spike, they'll allow the contractor to, you know, make a request for some additional compensation. On city jobs, we usually write that out, so I don't think they'll be able to make that claim. And, you know, they're submitting unit prices for things like, that might have steel or some of the other things that might be volatile, volatile right now from a pricing standpoint. So, and the pricing was good, right? It was below our estimate. And so...
And the good thing was there wasn't much difference between them, so it's not like you had a real low one.
At the end, yeah, exactly. Not like a huge outlier, right? That we had two, two kind of down there. Yeah. And so, you know, you never really know. Some contractors have different styles in terms of how they like to approach the owner, meaning, meaning the city of North St. Paul, and I guess myself as the engineer, you know, on the contract, on like extras, extra costs. I mean, they're all entitled to their opinion, but there's certainly no reason why we, we have to hear them, but we don't have to approve their requests for additional compensation, right? Unless they're justified. So we do take those into account. If there is something that's justified, we might approve that, either by change order or informally. But if, if it's something that we think is not within the expectations of the contract in terms of compensation for performance, you know, I work for you, not the contractor, right? And so we're, we're interested certainly in seeing this project come in as close and hopefully under, if everything goes according to plan, the contract amount.
You've done a good job. We've had quite a few that have still... Appreciate that.
Thank you.
For your due diligence, right for Noel Ray.
Yes, that will help, yes.
Do you want to read the first one, so we can pull out the, the mount?
Sure, I can read and then you, yeah.
Then he's gonna do the second one, yeah.
So, yeah. So, "Accept bids and award by resolution a construction contract for the grand total bid in the amount of $5,137,768.48 for the 2025 Street and Utility Improvement Project, city project number 25-01."
Can I get a motion, please?
Some of...
So moved. Councilmember Woods?
Second.
Second. Councilmember Kinsey? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
And you're gonna have to read the...
Can I have my...
All right.
Which one is it, the sixth?
It is page 160 of 169.
Got the big G's doing this one.
Next up, approved construction service proposal for the 2025 Street and Utility Improvement Project by WSB in the amount of $625,936.
Brian, can I have a motion, please?
So moved, Your Honor.
So moved. Councilmember Norby?
Second.
Second. Councilmember Woods? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Before we move on, I would like to make one correction. I apologize. The printout that I had used numbers that we had calculated due to the best educated configuration for the GO bonds that were last week, they changed as of today because we knew exactly what their rates were. So I misspoke talking 6.74 million. She, Michaela, said the right number at 6.53 million or something. Through that.
It's a good way to go if you're going, if you're going goalless.
Might as well.
That's right.
For the better.
That's right.
All right. Our reports from city manager. So we had staff meeting today. Electric has been working back over Casey Lake. They got the rest of the lights up for the, the trail, which is more along the west side and then up to the lift station. We haven't gone back behind and around by the houses. We just, we like back bedrooms of those homes, but, so that's up and running now, which is great. They've had some training. They did their pole top training and their bucket repel training here this week as well. Sent in some of their equipment for testing for their high voltage. Communications, web, Eva's been, Eva's been, Eva has been busy with launching the website, which will take place on April 29th at 10:00 a.m. Don't expect any major disruptions and I think you'll like the outcome.
Nice.
Finance, of course, has been busy with the bond, doing the rating. Has been really on top of that, prepping all the information for everybody involved, Baker Tilly, S&amp;P, so he did, really did a good job. Place says there are two new hires that they had, have completed their field training. Now they're able to go out in the field on their own now. They still have one person in training, going through that field training process. They still are down one officer and one CSO, but, and our CSO will be taking their test probably next month. And we moved on to the officer. They already did the interview process for him and bring somebody on for hopefully a little while to train on him as the new CSO as he moves on in his career. Ray was at chief school last week, had pretty good attendance, like 410s there. Said it was a good outcome and good training. Public Works, this time of year, they're pretty busy. The road restrictions are coming up tomorrow, so things are gonna start happening. They got four summer help ready to go and one horticulturist coming on for the summer. They've been out street sweeping, kind of cleaning things up from the winter. Doing ball, ball field prep too, which every year this time, they get a little anxious and want that open right away, but you gotta, it's built on a bog, so it takes a little longer to dry out. Doing some PVC sewer line, sewer line cleaning that's in progress right now. We've got the lead service line inspections going on again. Got that back online. They're doing probably five to seven each day that they're doing the inspections, so picking away at that. Student build houses coming along. They're working on the sheet rocking right now, so it won't be long. That's gonna be up and ready to go for the market. Fire's been busy. They got two new part-time on-call members starting here and classes begin in mid-August. They're doing a live burn training tomorrow, which is at their training center out there on Highway 120 and County Road 14. New engine is still, things are moving along well, no more delays, so they're expecting that come next June, so they're looking forward to that. Still working with the, getting door lock bids for the contractors that we've dealt with, so a lot of good options out there, so just keep your checkbook up. And then we've been doing fire inspections on our city buildings as well, which will be finishing up here shortly, so that's all I got for you.
Thank you very much. Reports from council, commissions, and committees.
Well, the EDA met last Tuesday, I think it was on the 8th, and we voted in some president, vice president, and the secretary and treasurer. And then we started working on the initials of the fascia for our city downtown, so that's in the process. We did have two members still absent, but we went on with the facade. Oh, the facade, yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
If I could add to that, that facade program, we should have that up in Open Gov as of tomorrow.
Oh, nice. That's cool. Thank you.
Arts and Culture Commission met after, the day after our last city council meeting and talked about the Otter March Festival and plans for some of the activities there and the mural that's gonna be done over at the Historical Museum.
Okay. So... Facing towards the Legion?
I believe it's facing, I believe it's facing towards the Scout.
Oh, Scout, okay, that side. All right. I wasn't sure what side they're doing. That's gonna be great. That's a good spot.
Yeah.
Thank you. So, Norby?
The Planning Commission met on the 3rd. There were two topics of discussion. One was the approval of the master plan for the parks, which we voted in the consent today. And the other is they are discussing the downtown design manual. Had some great discussion on it and more to come on that, but it, that's probably gonna be a couple of meeting discussion of how to streamline that. But great discussion, great group. Could it be more proud of that commission?
Great to hear. Thank you for your time. For all of you guys, when it comes to, when it comes to your committees and commissions, thank you. General business? Anything, public affairs? All right? What?
Nothing for me.
All right.
Just would like to remind everyone, as of today, you can now start putting your yard waste out.
Yeah, I got my barrel and silver flow. Yesterday was out. Oh, you must be Wednesday.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're Tuesday. Ours has been gone for a day.
Mayor privilege.
Yeah, exactly. Yep, they just come just for me, just that one truck. Yes. I did want to mention that I drove by the student build home. It really looks nice in that spot. I mean, they did a great job. It fits in really well. Looks like it really belongs there, so really pretty proud of it. Yes, it's been a great... We did talk about having Tom into one of our meetings. Is that still on the schedule? Yes. To thank him for all he's done for our community?
Absolutely.
Awesome. Good deal. All right, if there's nothing else, I'll ask for a German.
So moved.
So moved. Councilmember Woods?
I'll start.
Second. Councilmember Kinsey? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.
Have a good evening.
May 5th is the next meeting.